I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It is 6:01 PM. This is a regular school board meeting of the Tri-City United School Board. It's Monday, May 14th, 2018, and we are located at the high school band room. Roll call finds all present except for Deanne Rudd is absent. Next, we have our administrative report.
Yeah.
I don't know, it went black. I'm gonna tell you about a few things here. There we go. Members of the board and Tri-City United public, we've just got, once again, great things happening across our district, at our sites and in our departments. I'm gonna hit just a few highlights. One of them, obviously, you can see all the things from Tri-City United Montgomery. I'm gonna highlight a little bit on the WINTIME. That's that "what I need" time, and something that's happened at all of our sites this year, in a little bit different name, but similar structure. And in my monthly meeting with Mrs. Dwyer, this was one of the things she said was really a highlight, and as I had a chance to sit in on a couple of collaborative learning teams in their grade levels, that's something they referenced as well, the collaborative learning team, and the impacts that they've had through WINTIME, that they feel like they've been able to offer kids so much more this year, just because of the dialogue. So that's been really exciting. In our community education, all kinds of things going on, but one of them I wanna highlight that happened today. Natalie Eckstein, who is our early learner, learning coordinator, hosted a session today with area community members and early childhood supporters to really be dig in on some planning and future planning for early childhood initiatives across our district. So it'll be exciting to see where that can land. They've also continued with the middle-level clubs like we've had before, and Mr. Pizing indicates that the cooking club and the art club were really the most popular, and that's something they've had really good turnouts in the past for as well. Tomorrow night, you will wanna, if you're here at the high school, swing by the vehicle fair. That's not in here, but that is, I think, from 4:00 to 6:00, 5:00 to 7:00?
It's from 6:00 till 7:30.
Totally wrong. 6:00 to 7:30. Six to 7:30, so stop on by. Within our special services department, I wanna highlight some of the things, you know, we do a lot, it's not only the work that happens during the school year with our students, but when we can have nice, smooth transitions from one grade level to another, or especially from one building to another, it can make all the difference for all of our kids, but in particular, those who may have some additional needs. And so they've been working on communication and some of those smooth transitions for our students in a really proactive manner. Within our business office, I wanna highlight the insurance enrollment, as we had a great opportunity to add and do make some shifts within the insurance plans that we offer, and by positive vote from every single employee group, we are making those shifts, and today opened up enrollment for insurance for next year. So that's a big step for our district. We've come a long way in these years of really being informed about insurance itself, and our staff has done just a fabulous job of being open to learning about a really complex In our high school, lots of things happening. Our BPA is at Nationals right now. I'm sure that many of you have seen how well our FFA did, all the work that's been going on, but I do wanna highlight that this Friday is our TCU High School Pops Concert, so come on out. You will wanna get some tickets, and there's a good meal ahead of time, and then a great music the whole evening. Then our food service, we are moving forward with our free summer meals program at both locations of TCU Montgomery and TCU La Center, so really encourage our one-year-old to eighteen-year-olds to be able to access that, and even adults have a greatly reduced price to be able to come for lunch, and it's pretty good even, I eat there in the summertime, too. Within our TCU La Center, I wanna highlight a little bit of some of the work here, and I know Mr. Grensteiner's talked a great deal about academic language, but some of the things that he and I were visiting with Mr. Fredrickson about last week was on the dialogue our students have, and kinda joking even, but really getting it about the costas level, which is a big part of Avid, and the rigorous questions that they themselves are not only able to answer, but also to craft on their own, and it shifted the kind of dialogue and discussions that are happening within the classes. And finally, at TCU Laundsdale, some of the pieces that they've been continuing with, as all of our sites have, but just an area to highlight, is the flexible seating that's been going on within, and doing some pilots, again, that's at all of our sites happening. Recently, I was able to observe Jordan School and some of the things with their middle-level renovation, and they were sharing about flexible seating that they're doing in elementary, and granted, it was great, but I also, seeing our own sites, were right in there as well, and the creativity of our staff, and our students having that choice and voice, and what kind of learning environment fits for them best, is really making a difference, and they're handling it really well. You know, someone say, "Oh, will this different kind of seating make 'em too wiggly?" Completely the opposite. It helps to calm, and so it's been really exciting to see. So, great things happening, and encourage everyone to read all of the reports that are provided by our sites and by our directors.
Wonderful.
Playing tricks on me tonight.
Thank you. Do we have a representative from the high school student council? Wonderful, come on up. Can have a seat right there at the table.
So some recent projects that we've been doing, we did Safety Week last month, and we helped put on a presentation with Deputy Dave and Father George to raise awareness for distracted driving. And then we did a Breakfast for Teacher Appreciation Week last week, where student council members cooked breakfast items and brought them in for the staff for the high school. Then we also did, this is an ongoing activity until the end of the year, we're collecting pop tabs for Deputy Dave to bring to the Ronald McDonald House, and then we also did ditch cleanup this past Saturday at 9:00 AM to like, and we cleaned up the water ditches in Montgomery.
Nice.
Thank you, Anya.
Thank you. All right, next, I will seek a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Ashley Recival, second by Dale Boss, to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion has passed, 6-0. Next, we have our consent agenda. First is our approval of our minutes of April 9th, 2018, regular school board meeting, and of April 23rd, 2018, special school board meeting. Under personnel, we have new hires. Bruce Hollum, seventh-grade baseball coach. Jamie Imav, Cooks Helper Montgomery. Lauren Mandelfeld, a second-grade teacher in Lee Center. Shelley Narum, an ECSE, three-to-five berth, and three, berth to three, special education district-wide. Allison Krasinski, English Language Teacher in Lee Center. Austin Pinky, a special education teacher at the high school. Katie Bruchowski, English Language Arts, and Rosetta Stone teacher at the high school. We have increase in hours. Erin Buckingham, youth soccer program coordinator for community ed. Employment ending. Lauren Mandelfeld, .5 FTE, second-grade teacher in Lee Center. Jason Mary, our 712 Activities Director. And Eric Root, our middle school and high school band director. Leave of absence. Kristen Schlingman, intervention teacher in Laundsdale. Michelle Nadine, a part-time custodian in Lee Center. Under policies, this will be the first reading. 407, employee right to know. 413, harassment and violence, and the form that goes along with that. 414, the mandated reporting of child neglect and physical or sexual abuse, and the bullying prohibition policy. 524, internet acceptable use and safety policy. 534, unpaid meal changes, charges. 620, credit for learning. 624, online learning options. 704, development and maintenance of inventory of fixed assets and fixed asset accounting. 712, video surveillance other than on buses. And 802, deposition of obsolete equipment and material. The approval of the bills in the amount of $572,811.29, and also our finance report. I will seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion.
Second. Michelle, was that you?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion by Kevin Huber, second by Michelle Borcher, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion has passed, 6-0. Next, we have our Titan Pride Awards.
I'd like to ask Mrs. Dwyer to come forward with, present the presentation of some Titan Pride Awards here.
Good evening, Superintendent and Board members. I have a list of local business people who I would like to recognize tonight for their generous contribution made to our school to help our teachers be recognized during, last week during Teacher Appreciation Week. I invited them to come in tonight. I don't know, I know we have a few people here representing the businesses, so I'm gonna ask that if you're here to represent the business, when I call you up, you can come up and get your award. Those that are not here, I will be making a personal delivery and thanking them personally for their generosity and thoughtfulness. Dollar General. Cornerstone State Bank.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
White Front. Wayside Liquor. Posey Floral and Gifts. Playmore Lanes. Pizzeria 201. Next Chapter Winery. Montgomery Oil. Montgomery Auto. Main Street Barber. Lynette's.
Thank you very much.
Herman's, Rifty White Pharmacy. Franzin Bank and Trust. And Edel's Meat Market.
Looks like you have some business.
Yeah, I have a lot of business, but it will be wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, the next portion of our meeting is an open forum, and it's, the public is able to speak in front of the board, and I believe there have not been any requests for this evening, so we'll move on to our informational items, and first up is our Avid, Lee Center Montgomery High School.
Members of the board, we are so fortunate to have our Avid elective teachers and also some students from our Avid elective classes here tonight to share the impacts of Avid and some focused areas that they've worked on. As a matter of fact, we've had leadership teams from each of our sites at an Avid leadership session today and tomorrow, and it's just really been some powerful stuff on what all is going on. So, yep, grab some chairs, come on up, this is a team effort, and we're just glad to have you here, and representing the awesome work that you've done this year.
You're in Avid, come on up.
You came, you might as well come on up and speak.
Yep.
Are we gonna do 7:08?
Go after Dave?
Oh, and do our ninth grade? Fabulous. Great planning.
Yes.
Thanks. So, welcome to you all. Would love to have you introduce yourselves, and then it's, the show's all yours.
Okay, I'm Jamie Nelson.
I'm Haley Gettle.
I'm Phil Campbell. I teach the Avid Elect class in Lee Center.
Deb Dwyer, principal at Montgomery.
I'm Allison Silva.
And I'm Matthew Marcel.
So this evening, we wanted to invite some of the students from our eighth-grade and seventh and eighth-grade class in La Center. We've only been doing this since the start of the second half of the year, so January, and we thought it would be great for you to hear how Avid has impact or made a difference with the students. And so with that, I'm gonna turn it over. Our students, we asked them to tell a little bit about what they have enjoyed so far about the Avid program. So, Matthew, if you wanna share?
Okay, so the Avid program has helped me because with my organization, it's helped a lot, because simple things they teach you helps a lot. It's like, you have your stuff in right folders and everything, and when we do our TRFs, almost nobody comes out without their question answered.
And what is a TRF?
I was gonna ask that.
Tutorial request form.
Yeah. Where you basically ask the question, and then you present it in class, and then they'll ask you questions, help you answer it.
That's fabulous.
So, Avid has helped me stay organized, and it's helped me keep my streak going on the honor roll.
Christ.
Well, I stayed a lot more organized, but the folders aren't like, a lot of clutter, let's say that, and I've met a lot of people, like seventh graders, that I probably wouldn't have talked to. And, yeah.
Avid taught me leadership roles, and it made me step out of my comfort zone with becoming friends with the seventh graders and joining the we team, and it just brought me from putting my shy little shell to when I am coming out from talking to you guys. I probably wouldn't do that if I wasn't in Avid. And then with the TRF, having Gus Davis come down, it, we got closer with the college people, and it's just a great opportunity.
How was your field trip to Gus Davis?
It was really fun, yeah.
Anything more?
I can speak a little bit about what we have, what we've done. Our mission for these guys, the La Center side of it was, or my view of it, was to make sure that they found their purpose and a passion, which I think a lot of them really have kinda narrowed down to something that they're interested in, right? In seventh and eighth grade, you don't necessarily happen to know what you wanna be when you grew up at that age, but to have a focus and set those goals, we worked on setting our goals in that class, and how to attain those goals with grit, and, you know, hard work, and where that can get us. And just in the short amount of time that these kids have been in the Avid program to see their growth, I can only really specifically speak to my seventeen, it's been really amazing and proud. I'm proud of what they do.
In Montgomery, we have just eighth graders in our program. We started with eighth grade, and just the taking on their own responsibility and seeing them succeed in their regular classes has been just amazing, and kind of getting out of their comfort zone. I know Allison here didn't wanna say anything, and she used her Avid skills to share tonight, so I'm really proud of the kids that are starting with this, and hopefully many of them will continue next year as they transition to the high school. Any other questions?
Mr. Campbell, did I hear you say seventeen students?
We have seventeen in the Lee Center program right now.
And do you make that part of your FiEd hour then, or is that another separate hour?
That is, right now, it is first hour of the day, so it's with exploratory, and then it'll be a different hour next year in our building.
Mrs. Dwyer, how many?
I believe we have thirteen?
Eleven.
Eleven. Okay, I think a couple have dropped out. And we run ours during our study hall time, so we've had a little trouble with students wanting to get extra help from their core teachers, but next year, we are going to have it during a non-study hall time, so it's gonna really help, and then we'll add seventh grade next year in Montgomery, so.
So does it just feel like they're putting tools in your toolbox on how to get things done and organized, or what?
Yeah, well, for me, with speech, basically, it's better now, because before, I usually like sweat up, get all red and nervous, and stop talking all of a sudden, like lose my breath, but like today, I stutter a little bit, but it's a lot easier to do it.
I heard no stutter. You did amazing.
So, Mr. Campbell, could you give like an example of what, either some of the lessons or activities that you guys have done, or even students describe some activities you've done that really stuck out to you?
I know one that I like to do with them is a quick write, so we'll come up with something that they'll write about, they'll write for three to five minutes, I'll have a question on the board, and then they'll write it down, and then after that, they get to share what they wrote down with groups that they've created in their classroom, kinda, you know, gets their mind on something to do, and then they get to talk about it, and sometimes they get pretty good conversations out of what's down on the board, and sometimes I gotta nudge them along a little bit, but for the most part, they do a pretty good job at sharing and...
What does that do for you?
Well, it kind of, it, it makes it easier to write, like, you don't get as many things in your head when you just can't write. You know how to write better.
Learning to focus, maybe?
Yeah.
And then for me, it's the connection we have with the seventh graders, because they're more personal ratings, and I would have never known that person did that, or that person wants to go there, so it's good knowing that person better than just looking at them.
Well, in Montgomery, for careers and stuff, we did, we, there was like these five main career personalities that they put in our room, and we would stand in them, and we would go in order, like, P-A-I or M-A-A, and then you would go online and take a personality quiz, and some people got exactly right, too, found out that they weren't like that, and then it would like, based on what you prefer for college length and work, you got chosen with your best-fit jobs and stuff. And I know for me, what came up was something I would actually be interested in.
Fabulous.
What was that?
Yeah.
What?
What was that?
Marine architecture, sure.
Cool.
Anything stick out for you, Allison? Everything.
I know one thing for me to add before the end, you know, brand-new can be nerve-wracking. Didn't know what to expect, it was summer institute training, and that was it, and really nervous going into the year, and I was like, how's it gonna work? How's it gonna work? I don't know. But then just something that we've learned in our classroom, too, being open and honest. Very first day, I just told the kids, I'm like, "We're gonna grow it together, we're gonna learn this process together, and we're gonna get better at it as the year goes on," and I think that's something that has happened. And I'd like to thank Ms. Murray, Ms. McKissick, she's done an awesome job helping our program out as well, in setting up field trips to colleges and things like that, for opportunities that not all kids get, to go see these different places, and not just four-year colleges, tech schools and all that stuff, too, she's incorporating it all, so give her a shout-out.
Absolutely. Anything else?
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good things, guys.
Come on up, guys.
I've got, the Chrysler members of the board, I've got three high school students here as well, all ninth graders, and I'll have them introduce themselves here in a minute, but we, they started, Juve Middle School started implementation, second semester, we were lucky enough, we were able to start at the beginning of the year, and it's been a great year, and we've got three wonderful people here to help share tonight, and there was fifteen, sixteen, seventeen more that we could have brought in to share with you tonight, that we've seen some great growth. And my previous experience in my previous district saw Avid begin there, implement, and move through the first, for about five or six years before I came here, and seeing the same kind of things, the same changes in these guys, and just the outgoing, volunteerism, willing-to-work dedication, and then the family feel, it's really cool. Carol Harmer is our Avid elective teacher, who connects really well with these young people, and she's a great personality and fit for what the Avid program exemplifies. So, she's supposed to be coaching softball, not sure that happens.
She is.
So she was wishing, maybe I should, I'm like, no, I got it. So, but I gave them a prompt to share with you, they all have the same one, and I wrote down, "How has Avid helped you this year, and how has it began or begun to prepare you for college?" So, why don't you guys introduce yourself, and then share your response to that, and then I'm sure they'll take some questions.
Hey, I'm Jorge Pedron.
I am Joseph Seenov.
I'm Kylie Maxa.
Um, how has Avid helped me this year? I don't know what. When we first started the year, I did pretty bad, like, I had pretty bad grades, started with like almost all As, but throughout the year, I've actually, I'm almost on B honor throughout the year, and I really didn't have like, I didn't really have a school that I wanted, I really didn't know if I wanted to go to college. And we went to four individual schools, went to MSU, South Central, St. Olaf, and Carlton, and going to all four of those schools actually kinda interested me in going to college, and yeah, it's like, it's very helpful, it helps a lot. I wish I had it like in the earlier years, like seventh, eighth grade.
How many As do you have now?
Two.
You sure? Thought there was three.
Ooh, it might be three.
That's awesome.
Sure. One thing that Avid does that we do every Tuesday and Thursday are TRFs, which is when you have a point of confusion, and you discuss it with the class, and you work out your question by your groupmates asking you questions, and that kinda helped me with finals and everything, kinda packed on where we knew like we could get help and like solve it out together. And also, what questions to kinda focus on in classes and stuff, that'll help me like learn, we've learned question-taking skills and stuff that'll like prepare us for what we should be asking and what we need to know and get out of classes, so.
Last year, I remember I was so close to getting that B honor roll, I was like point two points away, and this year, I made it no problem, all three quarters so far.
Yes.
And I like the colleges because they're just so fun with the hands-on activities.
They've done a really nice job, and it's awesome to see the growth from the beginning of the year to till now, here, as we're starting to wind down, and just to see how these guys have grown, and their openness and willingness to share. We had some of our Avid team, I think, shared with you last month, that came to our, to our early out in March, and helped share some note-taking skills that we're trying to teach our teachers, so they helped in that, and these are coming from our ninth-grade students, so it's really cool to see that, and staff really responded to hearing it right from the horse's mouth, so to speak, you know, coming right from these guys, so that was great. We also have some seniors involved in our Avid program as well as tutors, and you mentioned the tutorials on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and it gives our seniors a chance to work in small groups with our younger Avid students, and it's been a great relationship, where they've gotten to know some older kids, who can provide them with some help and guidance and expertise, so not only leadership for these guys and helping educate our staff, but also some leadership interactions with our older students, who are very helpful to these guys as well. So it's been a great program, and we're excited to see where it goes next year.
Yeah, recently, we just interviewed a whole bunch of seniors for the TVs around the school.
To see, to see how they liked high school, what the transition from freshman to senior was, and the eighth graders are gonna be coming here Friday, right, and I was one of the, I was one that pitched to the councils to let, to... And I was one of the, I was one that pitched to the counselors to let, to let, like the Abbott group, me specifically, but, um, they kinda like tour with them and show them. And my main, like my main pitch was that it would be better if the freshmen did it because we just went through what they're gonna be going through.
First one and seniors are doing the tour.
Yep.
Yeah, we've typically reserved that for our juniors and seniors and, uh, some of our ninth graders approached us and said, hey, we can do this. We can maybe do it better because we just learned this.
Yeah.
And how can you argue? So absolutely they're, they're taking on leadership roles that we didn't even think of, so, um, truly leaders, so it's great.
So as you interviewed seniors, what were some themes or things that you, you learned from that?
Uh, that some of them actually, well, first of all, we actually talked to people that we didn't actually want to talk to before.
They're seniors, I get it.
Put it up front. I learned that some of them actually work on farms that I didn't even know about.
Yeah, no, a lot of it's like, the, one of our main questions was what's something unfair about getting older? And their main response was the responsibilities, like, um, that. Yeah, how fast it goes by, that they, that they have to worry about paying more, like gas money, where to eat, how to eat, you know?
I remember, uh, I asked one person, they said, um, that the new kids get away with things that I wasn't able to get away with.
Then what are those things?
That's so funny.
And another question was, um, their favorite, well, what, what they, well, what, what class would they recommend to an, um, lower classman? And a lot of them said, well, most of them said either a study hall or, um, a higher like college credit classes. And that's what I've, I've done. I went from, I'm in the lower math right now, but I'm trying to get back into the regular math and then go to advanced math and doing PC biology and PC English.
Yeah, one of the encouragements for our Abbott students is that, uh, they push themselves, um, especially after their freshman year. Um, and started to take on some challenges that they maybe normally would not. We wanted to gain that pre-college or potentially sophomore or freshman, junior year, um, some college credit experience so that they feel successful and comfortable, um, still with the high school safety net there, but, uh, giving them that encouragement and that understanding that they can do this and, and they are able to do it. So we're looking forward to seeing these guys move into some challenging and rigorous courses and, and be successful and, uh, help us at the stage for college, so.
Almost everybody in Abbott signed up for pre-college biology.
And English.
That is fabulous. Plus having the tutorials is an additional support.
Yeah, they're, those very, it'll help a lot.
Yes.
If you do have questions, but sometimes you don't, so you just kinda go with what you had before.
Where?
If you have a question, you can kinda like take a little bit of a break instead of having stress about that, where you can ask others, people that have already gone through it.
So would you recommend Abbott to other students?
Yeah.
If, if they need the help.
Even if they don't need it, it's still nice to have.
If you're ever struggling in high school, they're always there.
Yeah, like, like they said, like some of you guys said, it's like family.
Mr. Appen, you said nineteen students?
Uh, there's actually.
It's like twenty-four.
Twenty-two.
There's twenty-two or twenty-one.
Somewhere around there.
And are you hoping for those same type of numbers next year?
Yeah, uh, most of the students are sticking with Abbott, uh, in the tenth grade. Uh, most of our group, if, if a student is deciding not to, we do actually do an active interview. Uh, there was a couple of students from the little center eighth grade and, uh, Montgomery eighth grade that are not choosing to take it in ninth grade. So, Ms. Irwin, myself and Ms. Harmer, uh, interviewed those students, uh, and they, they went very well. It was impressive to see the eighth graders being able to say why they don't need the help next year and why they don't wanna try it on their own, which was great to hear. Um, but on the other side of that deal, we, uh, also have some students joining. So we'll have probably a few new faces in your Abbott family next year in tenth grade. Um, we've got some coming in that could use some assistance in certain areas or, or just are looking for that connection and college prep type situation. Um, and then, um, I believe we have, uh, Mr. Fitter, how many coming into the high school active in ninth grade next year? Is it twenty-five, twenty-six?
Uh, low twenties.
Okay, low twenties now, so, um, yeah, the numbers are looking really good. We're excited to see that, so.
And that's a good thing to point out and, and one of the things that was emphasized in our training today and will be tomorrow is, is, um, you know, the goal is college readiness for all. And I know that oftentimes people say, well, does college just mean four-year? Absolutely not. There's certification, there's trades, there's two-year, there's vocational. Yes, there is four-year, um, but it's for all so that all doors are open for whatever pathway a student wants to take. And I think that's the thing we've already heard tonight from our groups. And having been to some of the summer institutes, uh, some of the speakers that they have, they got nothing on you guys. I can't hardly wait to hear each year, the, the growth, further growth that you take and what you've already accomplished. Um, it's nothing short of inspiring. Bravo.
So I'm gonna, there's this quote that I like. It's, um, life, well, high school is like the autopilot of the mind. You, uh, flip the autopilot on, you just breeze through high school not learning anything.
And you're challenging yourself to take it off autopilot, aren't you?
Absolutely. And I've, I've already flipped it off and I'm learning a lot of things that I would've never learned.
That's awesome. Any other questions or comments from our board?
You know, it's just cool to see you guys up here and what you're doing, so. This is what we wanna hear and we like to hear from, you know, the principals and things like that, but we'd much rather hear from the students, so. Be proud, be very proud of yourselves.
We did the right things in, in adding these programs. It's, it's just making, building your opportunities greater than what they were.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for coming in.
All right, next we have our soccer update.
Good evening, Dr. Prechler. Before I get into soccer.
Would you like this?
No, I've got everything I need unless you wanna.
Unless you wanna tell me which ones to open. You can just tell me too.
Just hit the summary one for now.
Okay.
Before I get started, as a parent of a student in Abbott, I absolutely love the program because he's done everything that you saw up here with all these students. He's, uh, more assertive and more responsible for his, uh, education. He was a kid that we had to push all the time to do his homework and we don't have to do that anymore. And he's on the B honor roll and been doing great, so thank you for that as a parent. All right, on to soccer. Um, as, in March, I came to you regarding the soccer and the survey that we did in fifteen, sixteen, and, um, you wanted me to go out and get a more formal understanding of who we have for interest in soccer. And I did do that in April and in May, I sent out a Google form asking all the parents and all the students in grade six through eleven for this year, who would be interested in, uh, going out for soccer in the fall or beyond that? And, um, I had an amazing amount of students that were interested. Let me scroll down. You'll see the summary of the females and the males in the different grade levels and, um, and then also corresponded with those that were in a fall sport currently, um, and what sports they were. And the overwhelming majority of the students that are interested in playing soccer aren't in a sport, they're in nothing right now. So it's a whole, uh, group of students that aren't doing anything, which was a real, um, eye-opener for me and, um, is encouraging that we can offer in the future, a sport that students aren't in. And, um, and so that was encouraging to see. I further met with them as well to make sure that the students are actually interested and understood when this would happen. Um, more specifically, I wanted to see where we were at the high school level, uh, and find out if, uh, we have the numbers at the high school level for, for a team and then hoping to fill in some gaps with students in lower levels if needed. Uh, I do have also a budget set up, um, with two scenarios for you to consider. The first one is what I presented to you, you can click that one.
Do you want that one?
Yeah, well, I'll show that one first. Uh, this was revised a little bit with some of the equipment as I searched, um, researched what we were gonna need. We don't have enough, um, standard goals, uh, in the district. Community Ed does have some, but they're not all the right sizes that we need. So that number, uh, was revised from the first time I presented the, the possibility have in boys and girls, varsity and JV. And these were the numbers and I just wanted to give you the, that, um, figure and explain where the difference was in the equipment because it's a little higher than what it was. And then this is what we would present or would estimate a cost of what it would be if we did varsity and JV, boys and girls. So that'd be four teams, which the numbers that we have would indicate we could support it. Um, but to be safe, I wanted to present another option and that would be just having one level for each gender. And, um, this would be the, uh, the budget for that. It's a little less, but still, um, it'll take an investment because we're gonna need to, uh, purchase some of the, the equipment, the upfront equipment, the, the goals are what's gonna cost a lot more than, than anything. So after the first year, it won't be nearly this high, uh, but, uh, the goals themselves cost anywhere from two to three thousand dollars to get them, so. Community Ed does have some, but not all, all of them. All right, so those are the, the budget, the revised budgets that I looked at for the two different scenarios. Um, I updated the, the board indicators also, we don't have to show that. And let you know, you can go back to the summary, Dr. Prechler. I'll let you know that where I fit in the different amounts of interest, the numbers there and then the budget as well. I did also put into some considerations as to where I would move forward with soccer. Um, I know it, it would be a big investment, but we have a lot of students that are interested in it. Uh, my suggestion would be to start with one level at each gender. It could either be varsity or JV. Our numbers, uh, of age groups show that we have, uh, more juniors currently. Um, uh, and then we'd have to fill in with younger age groups to make a full twenty-two roster team. And being it's our first year, logically speaking, it would seem we wouldn't maybe be as competitive, so having a varsity team, uh, may be detrimental to our students because they're just not at that level right now. However, I don't know where their level of skill is, so that's just a judgment call on my part. So I could be way off. These kids could play a lot more in the summer in club leagues and be really good. I just don't know that for sure. Uh, but to be safe, a JV with the age groups, uh, the first year, being we only have juniors and below, JV makes sense if we wanted to move forward the year after, if you decide, this is hypothetical of course, if you decided in the fall to have a team, uh, you could always move the next year to have the varsity at that age level when the kids grow, um, into the sport a little bit more. Uh, and you could add, uh, another level if needed. I think probably the safest route would be to have one next year if you decided to go that way. And if not, then you could have it be the, uh, nineteen, twenty year as well. I still think both would be, uh, a viable option for the district to move in. Some of the concerns I have, when I did the summary, um, which was last week, uh, some of them were schedules and coaches, uh, where they would practice and play. I do have some suggestions as to where some things would work logistically for practicing. Uh, the most cost-effective way and, um, this is solely based off of that, would be to have everything here in Montgomery. They would practice behind the middle school. There's all that grass area, you could fit two or three soccer fields back there for practice. And then you could host the games on the football field. There would be eight games in a year to start. I think each gender, if you had one, would realistically probably only play eight to ten the first year. You can have as many as sixteen, fifteen to sixteen in a year. But I think in that first year and, and where we're at, um, in the season right now, because it's a fall sport, uh, to get eight or ten would be really a good, good goal for next year if it was decided to do it next year. So that would give you four home games each gender if you did one, uh, which puts you at eight. And most schools, uh, do play on their football fields. I know it'll beat it up, but I mean, when you look at how often we use it for football, that's not very much. I mean, we're looking at four varsity home games and eight JV and, uh, ninth grade football games in a year, so that's only twelve. And that's not very many. So then you're adding another eight home games for soccer. It's doable. Now, when you get full varsity, both genders and JV, then you're gonna get into where your field might get beat up a little more, depending on the gear of course and how well, um, it's maintained. But, uh, I think it's very doable for that to work here. There's also an option with Lonsdale, has talked about having a, they're building a soccer complex, or they built it already?
They're building.
They're building. So that's also an option where they would have a full-size regulation soccer field plus a few smaller ones. So that's an option in the future as well. Uh, that would add a little more busing to bus them over and back. Uh, there's some ways that you can maybe make that work within the routing bus, the buses, the routes and stuff that work. It would just be to work out the logistics, but it is possible. So there's options for where to have it. Um, the center could be as well. The only thing is, is that you have junior high over there already utilizing the football field, so it might be overkill, but that doesn't mean if there's opportunities over there that it can't be over there too. So both, all three cities have opportunities. The most cost-effective would be to keep it here in Montgomery, uh, but that's not the only option you would have. And it doesn't need to be known quite yet anyway, so. Uh, coaches were another concern that I had, so if we offer this and we don't have anybody in district that would even be able to coach them, that doesn't make much sense. So I sent a very, very informal question to the staff here at TCU through the district, the whole district. And I got quite a few responses back that there was names that would be possibly interested or would be at least qualified for it. So it's not like we don't have anybody here in the district that wouldn't be either interested in it or qualified for it. However, that works out, it's still unknown. That was very informal. Nothing was ever promised to anybody. It was just to see if we had any, anybody in the district. And we do have some, so that, uh, was helpful. The other, um, the other things to consider, um, would just be the sustainability of it. It seems like our numbers show that we would have a youth program, uh, that would sustain it. The more we, uh, offer, um, the seventh grade on up to twelfth grade, I think it would sustain more. You know, I showed you that it was very, very popular all the way up to sixth grade and then it kinda fell off. Uh, I think doing one gender in both, or one level and one gender would be a good start. I can't guarantee anything, but our numbers show that it's at least good to look at and, and consider. So my s- suggestion or consideration would be to look at if the fall would work, to offer one for each level of each gender, uh, but if not, then for sure the nineteen, twenty would be realistic. So.
Jason, if we could go back to your number page?
Yep. Just scroll down.
First of all, I like how you set that up and, you know, broke it down. Uh, in looking, you know, first at the female, thirty-five possibilities, that number six, uh, the sixth grade, that number fourteen. Are they, you know, if we would consider this for next year, would they, would that actually be seventh grade or are those technically fifth graders now?
No, those are sixth graders this year.
So they, so actually they would fall.
Yep, so they would just be bumped up a year for next year.
Okay. Then my next question would be is with those kind of numbers, would we allow the lower grades to play at that quote V squad level? Would that be your suggestion as well?
It would depend on how, if we can fill a team of twenty-two or not, or however many you want. At the JV level, you wouldn't be subjected to just twenty-two. That's the varsity level for the playoffs. That's the limit you can have. Um, during the regular season, you can have as many as you want, but traditionally speaking for the varsity level, we don't typically go over twenty-two because you run into the problem of having to choose come playoff time, who you're gonna have on your playoff roster and then people's feelings are hurt, kids' feelings are hurt. At the JV level, you wouldn't have that because you don't have that playoff opportunity. So you could have more. It just depends on who would all be interested at what level and what skill, of course, so. It wouldn't necessarily be cutting, I guess, but you would definitely want to look at your students and see where their skill levels are and, and then fill it in accordingly. So technically, I guess if the seventh grader was really good, they could be over, uh, someone higher. But then it depends on how you want to set up your selection of students. If you just did one level, it would make sense to have it just be from junior or seniors on down who you can fill in before you let in the junior high. That make sense? Yeah.
Well, and I think Community Ed is really developing or has developed quite a.
Well, and I think Community Ed is really developing, or has developed quite a robust soccer experience, and/or some of the club soccer, I've noticed, just having younger children. And so that would make sense, too. Historically, we haven't had soccer even through Community Ed. So I think why we're seeing low, lower numbers in sixth, or higher numbers in sixth grade, a lower grade, is because those kiddos now have gone to sixth grade. So I would only anticipate that it would increase as we go. And if, starting with the JV team, then have it grow with, would be, make the most sense, I would think.
With the club and the Community Ed aspect, those students in seventh and eighth grade would still have that opportunity.
Right.
If they didn't make the JV, the JV team.
When you talk to the kids, did you talk to them about the two ideas of having varsity JV or just JV? Like, did they have any?
I said both. I said it's possible. I said, we don't know yet.
Yeah. But did they have, like, a response to either or?
All their kids, the sophomores and juniors said, no, we want varsity.
Sure.
Oh, right.
Because of the possibility for playoffs.
Yeah.
So that's the only, the thing that would.
Were they like, though, if we had to just have one, though, that'd be cool, just, I mean, like?
Yeah. They just want it to start.
They want something.
Mm-hmm. They'd be really, really excited if it would start.
Jason, when you priced out the equipment, like the goals, stuff like that, did you contact the cities? I know Lee Center's, Lonzo's got one, Lee Center's got a soccer field as well, on the far end of Centennial. Are those goals, regulation, that they could be used instead of us purchasing, or?
I'm sure some could be. I didn't look that deep into it, just because sometime, we're gonna have to order or buy some at some point, anyway. So I just gave you what the, that is the top of what your budget's gonna be. You definitely could be thrifty in finding out what everybody else has and utilize it. It'd just be transporting them back and forth, and making sure they're not all being used at the same time. So yeah, there's definitely, that's the high end of what your budget's gonna be if you had to buy all brand new. But definitely could be less than that if you utilize what we do have in the district.
So realizing these numbers, and again, these are, you know, face-to-face, they haven't put their name on a dotted line or anything. And also recognizing that there's eleven players on soccer field at a time, which is way more than I thought there was before. I want, just once again, if in fact, these numbers didn't hold, what is a number you feel that would need to happen, or need to be in order to safely, and, well, safely have a team for, even if it's one team?
I would say fifteen. I mean, with eleven, that gives you five. Anything over that would be better, but that would be the minimum you would probably want, is fifteen students on a team, for one team. And if you decided, whenever that would be, if you wanted a fall team, we would do registration now, in the spring, to find out before we ever did any hiring, to make sure that they're committed, and we would know that we would have enough.
About the schedule, is that gonna be something, say we did it for the fall, I know you put that in there.
Mm-hmm. That it's word laid in the game. We're gonna be able to find JV games. Varsity ones will be a little harder, because the varsity halves are set already. But I think we can find junior high JV. Even if our JV played some really good junior high teams, that'd still be a good competition for us. We're obviously gonna be playing, you know, the Jordans, the Fairballs, the Northfields. Who else has one in our conference? How come I can't think? So, not, they're not in our conference, but St. Peter has a team. The Mancatos have teams.
So you're confident that there'd be enough?
I think we can find JV teams, for sure. The varsity would be more difficult.
Do we have the time to make this happen?
To the schedule?
Yeah.
Yeah, if we can come to a decision in the next couple of weeks.
I was just gonna ask, when do we have to?
The workshop would be the best, but not putting any pressure on you.
Because that's kind of a short time between here and there.
Marcia and Terry, what are you looking for? Are you looking for us to think about this, and then add, put this on a special meeting for our work session coming up on twenty-ninth, I think, is that date correct?
Exactly right. Yeah. Felt that you needed some time to really think about it all, before, didn't want to put information to action. I'll be honest, I was surprised with these numbers as well. Jason sent them to me. I, I would say probably less than a month ago, we were thinking we were maybe at.
Twelve.
Yeah.
It's kind of exciting to see it, though.
And even at that point, that was considering some co-op with Lester Henderson or Bell Plain.
Which isn't probably in the mix anymore, for now.
For your information as board, since we've not brought the fiscal nineteen budget to you yet for approval, because that won't happen until June, and recognizing that some of this equipment would, well, quite honestly, fifteen, eight of this equipment would go into, would be a capital, rather than unassigned fund one. So we could subtract that from here. But, in our preliminary, figuring, you know, conservatively, which we always do, and recognizing contract negotiations that we know of in the second year, which were done, I want you to be prepared that we would be bringing, we're probably going to be bringing forward a deficit spend budget for fiscal nineteen, meaning that our revenues to expenditures are gonna have expenditures higher than revenues. Still cleaning things up, we do still have some fund balance dollars because of the capital, or because of the reserve spend downs that the auditor said we needed to do. So we've been trying to be really responsible with those funds. But when you have just general expenses at being three percent and higher, and a two percent from the state, you don't keep up. And, you know, everything you're hearing and from legislature, that's, I mean, we are a typical school district, that you can't keep up when it, with a two percent revenue increase. I mean, heat alone, too much snow in April, you know, those things. So I, I want you to have that in the context of this as well. But it's, and that, so I don't say that to say a no to this. I just want you to have eyes wide open on those things, too.
I guess my other question would be with your departing, is this far, do you have this carried far enough along, that when your replacement comes in, it's not gonna be epic failure, because there it is?
I'll have everything I can. The only thing that I can control is the experience of the new one person coming in. If they don't have any experience being an AD, it would be more difficult, but not undoable. But if they do have our current AD and have experience, it wouldn't be that difficult for them to take over from that point. The hardest part is doing what we're doing now, setting the schedules up, and, and seeing where we're at financially, and, and just getting the legwork done. But if it's all set up, which it will be if it's decided to do this, I won't leave it that way.
I'll just have it done before.
I'll just have it done before he gets here. He or she, he or she.
The thing that excites me most about this is the numbers of the kids that are not currently involved in sports, and, you know, the, the few that are playing, they see themselves thriving in, in another sport, and which is, which is great. And it's just providing more opportunities for other students, that, for their, their passion and the things that they like to play, too. So, that's great numbers.
So Jason, in the, in the current sixth grade, you know, obviously for them to be in a fall sport, it would be, you know, like, the sixth grade football?
Football, or volleyball.
Yes.
Yeah. So, when you met with them, and they indicated they're not in a fall sport, were they in the mindset of understanding the connection there, or were they just thinking, no, I'm not in a junior high fall sport?
They, I don't know. I didn't ask that question.
I just cautioned that, look, these are heavy numbers.
I would say there are probably some that probably didn't understand that.
I mean, but these numbers, I mean, when you start to consider in here, I mean, they could probably still pull off a team. I just think the thought that we may really have numbers for two each is, we maybe really don't, but.
But if we have half those numbers.
If you can, I think it's really realistic to have one team.
Yeah.
I think it's very small, because we can grow it.
And I think that's the safest.
But, just to make sure we have kids.
Yeah, that's, we're investing.
So you get another six.
Females would have another six here, because there's none.
That six should be shuttled over to the Ann column.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Missed that.
Whoops.
Math is hard.
It's okay.
It's just good numbers. Copy paste is hard.
It is.
He's got math done.
Oh, I wouldn't say that.
My still point i- is if we would look at a beginning point of a JV team, okay, B squad, whatever we want to call it, if you look at those upper level numbers at a female, okay, three, one, and nine, is what we are really looking at, all right?
No, you're looking at the eight, too, because that eighth grade will be your ninth grade next year.
Okay. So seventeen, eighteen, twenty-one.
Good for girls, we're covered.
Yep.
Okay, for boys, let's see.
Plus, you're gonna, you could have a couple, seven, depending on the seventh and eighth graders for next year, fill in, too, just to get experience.
And that was my point. I mean, we would not, we would not, if we had some really good seventh grade girls who wanted to participate.
Yeah.
We would allow that. Because I think now, don't we have some policies, you know, at certain sports, you know, it has to be okay from.
Yeah.
Right?
If you're gonna pull up a junior high student, their parents and the AD, and the, the coaches have to be involved to make that be okay.
Correct.
Yeah. Except for, we don't do that in cross-country or wrestling, necessarily. Those are sports where they're seven-twelve, which this would be considered that.
But I believe, I believe we do it in softball, baseball.
Yes, because we're more specific. Yep.
Right, okay.
There's a junior high, yeah.
Yep.
But we would follow those policies.
Because they're specifically ju, absolutely.
Yes, okay. That's all I'm asking.
It's a good question.
Yep, very good. Yeah, this would be similar to your swimming, your wrestling, your seven through twelve programs, basically, cross-country, where we don't specifically have, well, we do in wrestling now, but your swimming and your cross-country would be that way, where we, where you use all levels to help out. Especially in the JV, up until this year, was always that year, way, where your junior high was basically wrestling your JV, where last year we moved to having it specific.
But they did travel with the varsity, too, so it's kind of, it's always.
Fabulous.
Questions.
Exciting. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, thanks.
Is there anything else you'll need from Mr. Mary in order to make a decision on May twenty-ninth?
Let me know.
It's always the closing question. Want to know what his homework might be.
No, you did a nice job.
Seems that you've done it, yeah. Looks good.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. All right, next we have Moody's bond rating. Jean Cap.
Jean, would you like the thing, or you want me to just open it up?
Uh, you can just open it. I have my material, but you can open it if you like. Superintendent Preisler, members of the board, I'm Jean Cap, Director of Business Services for the district. On May tenth, we learned that Moody's had affirmed the district's AA-three rating for general obligation bonds. So this was the result of a May second ratings call that Superintendent Preisler and I had done, along with our underwriters at Baird. And this was an anticipated result, but it's also positive, as it confirms the ratings increase that we received last summer. And this is the key step in our process for the sale of the bonds, for the referendum, the school referendum bonds, and also the LTFM bonds that will be used in addition for the second part of the La Center roof. So this is the cred, this rating and the credit opinion that Moody's put out will be used to the market and sale of the bonds, which will happen, actually, are happening today and tomorrow. So we will have results, actually, tomorrow afternoon. Tomorrow afternoon, maybe Wednesday morning at the very latest. But this was, like you said, it was anticipated, but also just a positive. So we were, we were happy with the, when we got the call.
Mm-hmm.
So, do you all have any questions about this means, or rest of the bond purchasing process? Okay.
Yeah, we just found out today that MDE approved our, the LTFM bond request. So that's why you hadn't received any notice about the sale of the bonds happening, because it was like at, I don't know, like mid-afternoon.
That all goes through MDE for the, a separate revision for the LTFM bonds, which was part of the resolution that was passed in March by the board. And then it's actually sent to the State Commissioner, where it's approved and signed as well. So that's just part of the packet that has to go along with making sure that we're doing everything we have to, to prepare for the sale, so.
Jean did an outstanding job preparing the information. This, this round is a little easier than last summer, when you were a couple of weeks in, and we had to put it all together as well. But outstanding work, and, and very articulate with the Moody's reviewer. And just a reminder to you all, when our, when our rating increase happened last summer, many school districts were going through, and businesses. But Mike Holheisel shared with us, from Baird's perspective, on all of the schools that they worked with, who were going with the review, we were the only school district that had a rating increase. The rest either held or had a slight decline. So, that was pretty exciting news. And now to have a second review and holding steady is, again, a positive. So, thank you for your work, Jean.
Yes, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jean.
Thanks, Jean, very much.
Eighteen, nineteen school calendar with our parent teacher conferences on it.
Yes. Well, members of the board, as you recall, we did bring a parent teacher conference, or goodness, school calendar to you for approval back on March twelfth. And at that point, we did not have parent teacher conferences on there, because our meet and confer, which is a committee that has TCU Education Association representatives from each of our schools, as well as school district representation and administration, that we, we meet three to four times throughout the year on, on various topics. Calendar is a big one. And so as we were taking a look at parent teacher conferences and wanted to gather more information, we, we did survey each of our, our sites as to what, what they've seen in responsiveness, how it's kind of fit with timing, those types of things. And we also track our attendance percentage. Now, in our K through six, our attendance percentage is well over ninety percent, both fall and in winter. It's, in many places, many cases, over ninety-five percent. So that's gone really well. At our seven and eight, it wanes a little bit, but has really improved when they've gone to a little bit different models. Probably still, Deb, would you say we hang maybe more in that seven, eight, around a fifty to sixty percent, or sixty to seventy? Yeah. So, still not quite at that ninety, but certainly at least over our threshold. In our nine, twelve, we simply have not experienced those types of percentage of attendance, especially in the winter one. And some of that is simply due to the use of JMC, so that, you know, a parent can really see grades any day, anytime, if they want to. So that aspect comes about, the immediacy, more of email kinds of things. And there is a little bit sometimes of the thought, well, now they're older and it's their responsibility. And yet, that's not pervasive, but we usually will, what we found in our winter was, we were hanging maybe around twenty, twenty-five percent. So, what the feedback was, was let's look at something kind of different. See if there's a way we can try to be reaching our parents in a different manner, rather than us having a night and just sitting and waiting for them to come. And so, from our high school staff's perspective, and gathering some, some input and ideas, they, along with the meet and confer recommendation and consensus, would like to pilot something that we've kind of called personalized format, a little bit different. The fall conferences would be the same as they have been. Those conference, the coloring didn't quite come through, so we'll have to get that color fixed there. The, the fall has been a little bit better than the winter, okay, as far as percentage. It's in our wintertime, when we have typically gone into the February kind of timeline, that we end up with a few less. And so what they're proposing is to do one night of parent teacher conferences in February on the eleventh here. So that'd be a regular, normal. We also do showcase. We also have where they can register for classes, but people can register from classes online through JMC, anyway. But it gives a chance to do incoming ninth grade meetings, those types of things. And then to take what would typically have been the second night of conferences, which is the equivalent of about three and a half hours, to split that into two different timelines. One of those being earlier here in December, we actually set a date, December third, it's kind of that mid-second quarter. And for about an hour, an hour and a half on that night, or two hours, I can't remember which one we had, our, our high school staff would be here, but they would be reaching out to parents, either making phone calls, or ahead of time, if, say, you, the three of us were teachers, and we knew that a student all three of us had, where it was having a difficult time, we would have. we would have pre-communicated, reach out to that parent and see if we could set up a team meeting, rather than the parent having separated, really giving a team support aspect, but do something different to try to reach out to our parents, be it if a student is having academic needs, social needs, behavioral needs, those types of things. So a little bit more on a, on a personalized basis. There's still the opportunity for any parent to be coming on the February eleventh, or, yes, February eleventh night for your traditional parent-teacher conference, but this gives that extra touch point in December, and then another touch point in March, which would be mid-third quarter. So we are hitting, we have first quarter, we hit mid-second quarter, we have then third quarter, with the, you know, kind of semester break, and then a mid-third quarter type of timeframe. Am I getting that third quarter right, Mr. Fitter, or is that mid-fourth?
Yeah, it's towards the end of the third.
End of the third.
So they have a chance yet.
There we go.
For that semester class.
Thank you.
And it's, and it's one point five in December, and two hours in March.
There we go. So it's a something, it's to pilot something different, again, doing more of a reach out than a sit and wait, and seeing if we can't improve our communications. And this does not take the place of, you know, if a teacher is seeing that a student's struggling, to reach out to the parent at any time. You don't wait till these, but these are intentional concerted times, where it's, it's really taking a look at where, where things are in a whole, and how maybe not just myself reaching out, but maybe a team approach in reaching out. And so bringing that forward for your information, and obviously you can see here, it states on both personalized format, more information to come. So there would be communications coming from our high school to our parents this fall, so that they'd be able to know, and then as it comes closer to.
I like it, very proactive.
Mm-hmm.
Gives our teacher, I, I like it.
Trying something different, you know, it's kind of like they say, if you do what you've done, and you're getting, you're gonna get the same results. So let's shift it up a bit here, and see if we can't reach some more.
And maybe that'll help with the parents who aren't the ones that are on JMC regularly checking, to have that teacher reach out to them.
You might.
I hope.
But being a team.
Mm-hmm.
Any other, any questions on it, or anything?
No, I'm excited to see how it works.
Do we need a motion to, for the revised school calendar?
Typically, the, we have, the school calendar itself, board is setting the dates, the number of days, and when the days will be. It wouldn't take board action for the conferences, but I definitely did want you to know, so that, you know, the change in format. All right, thank you.
Next we have enrollment update.
Our enrollment update is going to see a slight uptick this last month. We have a little bit of a growth here from, from April. Families are, in some cases, moving back, in some cases, moving in. So it's not necessarily just all coming back, maybe sometimes there's sort of with our families who are within migratory types of employment, leaving the fall, come back, this isn't necessarily the case here, this is families moving into our area. So it's good to see a little bit of a growth there, and typically, within our end of the year, we've not seen an increase in May. Typically, we see the, the patterning of the decrease, so this is a little bit of a shift in what we've seen the last few years.
We have our building project update.
Yeah, Mr. Maroni is coming from a meeting in Austin, his meeting there was, I think, at five-thirty. I told him to drive safely, Brenda always tells me, and so he did say he thought he'd be over here around seven-fifteen, but.
That was really good timing.
But with the board's permission, we move forward with some action items and come back and pick them up.
Yep.
All right.
We will do so. We'll move on to our committee updates, then.
I know I've missed putting in the agenda, some of our committees that met within the last month of the last time we met. We have had a policy committee meeting, we had a finance committee, and I'm going to bet there was a Southwest Metro meeting.
Tomorrow.
It's tomorrow.
But I do have some things, I mean.
Okay.
Information, I mean, but no, go ahead with the other ones first.
Nope, that's fine.
A couple of things that have come up out of the Southwest Metro, and, you know, you, I think you've seen them as well on your updates, is what's going on in the legislative. The biggest one is the constitutional amendment of three hundred and fifty-eight million dollars in, towards transportation highway projects. And if you will notice, they are telling you that's only two percent of the budget. And if we have been informed and asked to call legislatures, legislators, which I have done, being concerned about that, in the fact that that two percent is kind of what we operate on when it comes to our own, when we do negotiations, and, and the concern is, is where is that money gonna come from? As I was talking to legislators, I just said, hey, you know, we do need safe roads in our state of Minnesota, but please try to look for other places to try to come up with your money, rather than taking it, you know, possibly from education. And so that's, you know, a, a concern. The other one that, that I just don't like the wording that Governor Dayton is using, is the hundred and thirty-eight million emergency fund for education. I've never felt, in all my years of being an educator, that I was considered, you know, an emergency-type person to have to have funded. So I've addressed that, and they too feel that that's probably not the greatest wording in the world, too. But, but the bottom line is, is that we have many schools that are going to have to make cuts throughout the state of Minnesota this year, because of complete lack of funding, and that is what this will do, it will just kind of keep everybody, you know, back to balance. Superintendent Preisler's already talking to us as far as, you know, our future goes. So those are the things that we need to, you know, address, so on and so forth. Other than that, Southwest Metro meeting tomorrow, have a labor management one at three-thirty, and the regular meeting at five-thirty, so.
Thanks, Dale.
Thanks.
Finance was back on April twenty-third, so it's been a long time.
It's been a little while. Uh. We really did just.
We talked about, yeah, we talked about the F nineteen preliminary budget, and the focusing on the changes that we knew from this year to next year. We talked about the contract renewal, of the large number of contracts that are coming up, expiring on June thirtieth. And then we talked a little bit about where we were in the process of the bonds.
Thanks, Jeanne.
I appreciate that. And then we met, policy committee met, and as you saw, we brought forth a bunch of very minor changes, or no change, that we just do on our cycle, and then we're working on a couple other policies that we're trying to just sort of.
Finess.
Finess before we bring them forth.
Probably, the ones that we're working on are ones that aren't necessarily MSBA-developed, but crafting off of models of other school districts and everything like that.
Trying to pick the language that works for us, and the ideas that we follow, or hopefully would be approved, and make what works for TCU.
So stay tuned, new policy's coming.
We also met QCOM, I did take notes that night, but I do not have them with me. But we did go over the prior two-hour early out, beginning of April, and that big part of it was, Avid was part of that, at the junior highs, right, or was that seven-twelve?
No, it was seven, eight, doing the comprehensive in, instrument of review.
What worked, what didn't work, great things happening, and I know we were moving forward with our May two-hour early out, which happens this week.
Happened last week.
Or was it last week?
Mm-hmm.
So sorry, I have kids in school, you think I would know that. And yeah, so we have a QCOM meeting on Wednesday to move forward, and we'll do our summer planning for next, next fall.
The QCOM committee, the QCOM program, has really, really changed in the last.
This year.
Well, this year specifically, and I just feel like it's really going really well. Like, we're finally kind of getting it, and being more proactive in what, what we have offering during those teacher development time, and I think it's all good.
So it's a program, and forgive me if I don't know this, but, so it's a program that we follow, and that they have offerings that you guys kind of facilitate for these, or that the teachers select for those monthly two-hour early releases? Or what are you do, like, when you're having them, you say you're planning, so like, is it alongside staff? Or help me understand what that means.
Well, what we do is, we'll have a retreat in June, and take a look at the comprehensive professional development for the whole year, inclusive of workshop week, the early releases, the mid-year, those types of things. And so we kind of, based upon feedback, and where we see we are in our path on our professional learning community growth, and our guaranteed viable curriculum work, and then any other initiatives that we have, try to, to create a, a plan that's meeting those arrows, all getting aligned in the same direction. So we'll kind of have it drafted out in June, but then each month, what we do is review what, what did occur, and then make any kind of tweaks or shifts that need to happen for the next one. So we have a pretty good base, but as in anything, what you decide in June might not fit the next March. So that's what they mean by doing some planning for the next month. But like, for example, May, we determined a new, back last June, that, and because of the success and the positivity of it from last year, that May needed to be a celebration time, and it was an opportunity for teachers to share a new strategy they tried, a project they worked on, their individual professional development plans. The things that, that they took a, a risk to, to try and work through and research with their students, and what kinds of results they've had. And those are, those are very powerful, and so that's what our May early release was. Now, when we meet on Wednesday, it'll be, you know, some feedback from that, which we saw a little bit in the update on some of the wowzes that happened, and then begin to take a look forward. So it's, it's that dual, what worked, where do we go? What worked, where do we go?
Thank you.
And it's been, it, it's a living, breathing document, this, this.
Got it.
Outline kind of draft of what our schedule is. And it's been fun to watch, because it really has morphed and changed a lot this year, that you have the, they have the two-hour early out, teachers get together, they do what, you know, the things that we have planned, and then they work within each of their learning communities, and different types of groups that the teachers have, and bring the feedback back to our meetings, and then we tweak. So, you know, this month was really great, it was nice that we had time to work on this, and work with other teachers, and work with other, this, that, or whatever, that we'd like another hour just for this. And so we can remove, you know, change things, so that it works moving forward.
That makes sense, yeah.
And then, I mean, one of the things that stood out to me is some of the training that we offered, I think it was January, February, maybe, different training we offered for different groups. And after the fact, the feedback was, this was really, really great training, we'd like to see it earlier in the school year. So now for next year, we've planned to move that, what we had scheduled, earlier. So it, it really is, it's, it's, it's all for the teachers, and the administrators, and the educators, and.
And ultimately, the students.
Their personal growth, which then obviously affects the students.
Marcia, just one more quick update as far as legislature, the TRA fifty-eight million dollar bailout towards that money putting in there, it has passed, the Senate sixty-six to nothing. The word basically is that, as far as the House, it's gonna be held as a pawn for final negotiations, probably come.
Twenty-first.
The twenty-first, yeah.
The last day.
The twenty-first, and, and what is being basically stated out there, it is, you know, Governor Dayton would, once again, he still wants to do more as far as early childhood goes in funding, and that is where that is all going to fall. They feel it's going to pass, but they feel that it could be a situation, which would then affect us, you know, financially, if it is not passed, so.
Thanks, Dale. All right, well, we'll move on to new business?
Yes, that'd be great. You probably want to hold on a roof bit until Mr. Maroni gets here.
Sure. Do you want to do the.
Bond proceeds?
Yep.
Superintendent Preisler, members of the board, I'm Jeanne Cap, Director of Business Services for Tri-City United. I'm recommending that Tri-City United select PMA Financial Networks as the municipal advisor to invest the district's school referendum and LTFM bond proceeds. All investments would follow district's investment policy. PMA will focus investments that are safe, liquid, maximize yield, and they stress that it's in that order. PMA would receive fifteen basis points, so point one-five percent, on the execution of initial investments, and that's an annualized rate, so when they sell a financial instrument to invest on our behalf, they would take point one-five percent of the earnings on that, as their commission, it's annualized. So if they sold twelve one-month instruments versus one twelve-month instrument, the maximum they would make on that is one point five percent. So that way, they can, what we want them to be doing is to be getting as much as we can with our bond proceeds, and they will do that by being strategic in timing out the investments, and when they mature, to match our construction schedule. So we, through the sale of the bond, should receive the proceeds in mid-June. Of course, we won't use all of those dollars in mid-June, we'll be using them throughout the construction process. So instead of having that sit in a bank account, like, we want them to be investing it, and again, timing it so that it matures when we need the, when we need the cash to pay our bills. So the district does currently use, have an account with PMA, they're one of, like, the two municipal advisors, two school districts in the state. They advise on, they, they are elected by the Board of Mintrust, which is like an investment pool for municipalities and school districts. So, but I feel very comfortable working with them, they're proactive, they have very nice tools to work with. So this would just simply be adding, like, another account to the one that we have already, and that's the advice to do, to keep things, like, just separate and cleaner, a little bit cleaner, so it's just, it's literally just adding like a bank account for them. But that would be my recommendation, is to move forward with selecting them.
And we also did discuss this in our finance committee, and we're pretty much all on board with that.
Yes, that was another topic.
And her, and her doings on a daily basis, too, so.
Yep.
Helps our, tremendously to do that.
Yes.
Any historical evidence on what kind of interest they've been able to yield for other districts?
Yep, it's, it's very different, and of course, we are entering a better period for interest than what's been seen more recently, but again, of course, then, that, that's not all net gain, because we will likely see a higher interest rate on our bonds. So you can win for losing, but.
It just normalizes.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, it's, it's not a one-for-one by any means of, but, and the other thing that really makes a difference is the timing. So we have about a year and a half construction project, and actually, speaking with both groups that Superintendent Preisler and I met with, both municipal advisors that we met with, that, that length of time, your time period, really impacts like the yield that you can, that you can get, and they really thought that our year and a half, though it seems long to us, because we're ready to use our new facilities, is on the shorter end of some of the projects that they're dealing with. So we wouldn't likely see as high of a dollar amount as some of the other, some other districts do, just because we won't be having the dollars invested for as long. So it was, I mean, it was, they were fairly comparable, but they did use slightly different products. PMA does have, does actually limit the products, the financial products that they use, a little bit more than the other advisors that we met with, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, I'll seek a motion.
Sure, move.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by. I have a motion by Dale Bass, second by Ashley Resiebel, to approve the PMA Financial Network Incorporated as a municipal advisor to invest the district's school referendum and the LTFM bond proceeds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion has passed six-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to bounce back to our building project update, so you guys can come on up and have a table. It was perfect timing. Welcome.
How wonderful. Okay. Thank you for inviting us here tonight.
It's been a little while.
It has.
Well, at least for the whole, the whole party.
Yeah. We've been very busy. Okay, so, Mr. Anderson is here as well, which I know you've, we've met with him before as well, but we are here tonight to just give you kind of an update, what's going on with the bond referendum. And we do have one significant event, that was the bids that were received at La Center for the roof project. So, this is what kind of the, the update will be for tonight. We're going to review the results from the La Center re-roof bids. We'd like to award that project tonight, so we can get contracts going, so that's kind of a work item. We want to give you a glimpse into the building planning process, look at the referendum project budget, schedule, where we are currently, next steps, kind of how this thing keeps moving. So, like I say, we've been very busy, and it's really kind of exciting, but let's start with the La Center re-roof bids. We received bids on that project last week, and as you can remember, this, this is actually a piece of the construction documents, so this is the official documents that contractors look at, and they bid, this is just one sheet of the set. Basically, the base bid was the bond referendum project over the gymnasium area, and those classrooms on each side of that. So, that was the absolute part of the bond. When we first started talking about this roof project with the administration, a couple months ago, I guess after the referendum passed, there was a discussion that there's some additional roofs that would be nice to be able to do, if we could do that and kind of extend the momentum of a contractor being on site and do some additional work, and let's see what that price would be. It's not part of the bond proceeds, but it's part of the long-term facility maintenance money, LTFM funding. So, basically, we looked at that and designed that portion as well, so what we did was we bid a base bid and we bid an alternate bid. And the alternate bid is basically that extension of the roofing. We wanted to make sure we had the bond covered. So, when we look at the results of the bids, this is the bid analysis, bid tab, if you will, bid tabulation, and these are the official bids, we received bids from three different roofing companies, Neiman Roofing, Flynn Midwest, and John A. Dolson and Son. So, basically, this is a little bit of a unique situation in that we, we had to structure this a certain way to allow certain companies, manufacturers, different types of roofs to be evaluated independently. So, the base bid A, fully adhered EPDM, it's a sixty-mil membrane, twenty-year warranty, that was base bid A. We had base bid B, it was a certain manufacturer, built-up roof, multi-layered built-up roof, which offers a thirty-year warranty, and then base bid C was another type of proprietary roof system, built-up roof with a thirty-year warranty. And, you know, we wanted to keep competition alive, the spirit of that alive, we wanted to make sure we got good roofs, so all the base bids are a quality roof, and roofs that we're very familiar with from our design end, and will serve the district well, as long as they're properly applied, because that's really one of the keys, is that roofs are properly applied. So, the three bids that we, and then you can see the base bid estimate that the bond was based on was $423,000, and the LTFM estimate, we had kind of budgeted or allocated a half a million dollars, but from a construction cost aspect, because we want to maintain some money in contingency and some money for fees and permit costs, things like that. There's always that, that additional money. We could look at a construction estimate of about $400,000 for that, of the $500,000 that would, that would be earmarked to do the extended roof. So, the, when we opened up the bids, of course, we see the right numbers, because all, all of my estimates are always wrong, I'm the first one to admit that, in a public setting.
It's a good quality to have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
But honestly, I mean, the correct numbers are always the contractor bid numbers. So, when we open up the bids, you can see the base bid A was $324,000, and then when we look at the alternate bid, A1, that's correlated to base bid A, A1, that's to re-roof the additional area, and what we did was we gave the contractors an option. It might fit good with their schedule for this year, it might not fit so good, so we didn't want to back them into a box, you know? Yeah, we could do that, but it would be better to do it next year, so we give you a better price for next year, or conversely, it's better that we do it right now, okay? So, we actually gave them an option to do that additional roof in 2018 summer, or summer of 2019. So, when we opened up those bids, and we saw the, the extension of the roof for base bid A was actually $234,000, and there was no change to do it the next year. So, in other words, there's no value increase or not to do it. So, in other words, it's up to us. It's going to be the same price, if we want them to do it this year or next year. The base bid B, the built-up roof, that was a base bid of $470,000, and then the additional roof areas for B1 and B2 is $457,000, and $480,000 for Flynn Midwest. So, they did see a value impact this year or next year, so they identified that in their bid. Then also, the John A. Dolson, who bid, bid base bid B, theirs was $472, or $491,790, and they're, they had the much similar approach to Neiman, where there wasn't any change for the, this year or next year, to do the extension of the roofing, so that was $472,000. So, when we evaluated all the bids, we looked at those and basically, to, you're going to hear a little bit more about inflation concerns, about what's happening to basically all projects in the state of Minnesota right now. A lot of inflation is hitting, and it's happened in the last six to seven months, ironically, you know, right after you put in a review and comment, then all of a sudden, this stuff starts to happen. You know, in other words, once you fix your prices, right, because you're not going to exceed any of those prices for the bonds, we know that, that's the rule. So, we'll come up to speed on that a little bit, but we are looking, we are asking all the groups we're meeting with, I'll just be frank right now, to, where, where can we save some money? You know, can we, if we get the same quality, adequate quality, appropriate systems, you know, where can we save some money? So, should we extend to the thirty-year, or should we, you know, be at the twenty-year? So, we had a lot of deliberation, even to the point of, well, let's, let's, let's ask the contractor, Neiman Roofing Company, to come in and, and talk to us. So, what we did was we arranged a meeting, and so we could meet their team, meet the person, the people who are going to be responsible for the installation of this, find out their experience. We went through some rigors on that to make sure that that system was going to be installed properly. Boy, we had a great meeting with the group, they're very excited about the prospect of working with the district, they are a local company, which is awesome, and some of the, some of the workers actually have kids in your district, so it's kind of neat, you know, and, or grandkids or something like that. But, you know, still, you want the quality roof, and I'll tell you, when you've got people that have forty years of experience, you know, up on your roof installing roof systems, that's a pretty nice thing, and not their first rodeo at all. First roof of this type, base bid A that was installed by this company was, like, 1979 or seventy-five, or something like that.
Yeah, seventy-eight, seventy-nine.
Yeah, exactly, I was like, well, I was still in high school. And I'm, I'm not that young anymore, and I'm the first to admit that. But anyway, it's just good, you know, it's, it's a good practice, sometimes meet the team that's going to be working with you, and, boy, we had a list of twenty questions plus, and it was just a really, I think it was a good experience for everyone at the table, myself included, and I think it was good for the contractor to, to be able to ask us a few questions, too. But they're all on board, and that's what the recommendation is built around right now is base bid A with Neiman Roofing Company, and that's what we landed on as far as administrative team and recommendation that we made, that you see in your, your information, right? It's included in the package, but, okay. Any questions on that?
They seem like really good bids.
Those are good bids.
Those seem like good bids. Now, the base bid A
Yep.
Is a twenty-year product.
Yep, twenty-year warranty.
Warranty.
Yep. Life expectancy, expectancy installed properly will exceed that, but yeah.
Okay, so does
At least that's the history of the tracker.
Okay, so does Neiman Roofing have a different product that might have a thirty-year warranty? Is there any other products?
Good question, you know, in a way, we asked that question, in a way, the contractor asked that question, because, you know, they kind of thought, well, yeah, we'd hate for a decision to be made based on the amount of years of a warranty.
Right.
And we've always made it clear with everybody, the design team, everybody, that what you want is a good roof. And a good warranty, but primarily, you want the good roof versus just the good warranty. But basically, yeah, there is a product. It's a little bit newer into the marketplace, it's, we don't have the longevity of it at all, it's been, I think, one of our projects perhaps, it's, it's a ninety-mil product, it's, instead of sixty, it's ninety-mil, so it's another half again as thick. It's got a little bit different detailing, the sheet sizes are smaller, there's more seams on the roof, so there's some pros and cons to it, to be honest with you, as far as the amount of installation issues. Sometimes, you know, the nice thing about the sixty-mil product is that it's a big, wide sheet, so you got limited seams, okay? So, you know, it's something that actually, we did talk to them about, if, if necessary, would, could we explore that with them, it's something that we could do after, after the bid is awarded, we could see what the value is there, and we could, you know, reconsider that, I guess, to go to that product. But it is a little bit, I'd say that it's probably within the available funds for this.
Okay.
But I think it would be one of those decisions that we should make in context of a lot of different things.
Okay.
You know?
But it's something you would think, you would
It is available.
Recommend that we at least explore?
We could explore it, doesn't hurt to explore things, okay? But, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yep. But that's nothing that we would need to
No.
Land on tonight, one way or another. Yep. I mean, perfectly comfortable with, with the base bid A, put it on new high schools around the country, millions of square feet of that installed successfully without any issues, so, and good longevity.
What do you normally see for longevity? I mean, I understand it's a twenty-year warranty, but do you feel it usually does exceed that?
Yeah, with, with that thickness, we used to use actually forty-five mil, and everybody felt good about that years and years ago. We used to put rocks on top of it, kind of like the Lonsdale Roof has. We're not doing that much. I actually misspoke at our meeting, ironically, Minnetonka, we are doing two gymnasiums with a, with a sixty-mil ballasted roof. Yeah, to save a little more money, because they're just, you know, money's tight, and doesn't matter what district you're with, but money's tight. And, you know, Minnetonka did the built-up roofs, not these proprietary ones that we've got here, but the built-up roof as a matter of course, always, but that shifted in the last couple of years because of limited resources and stretching the dollars. So, with all the confidence, they've got the twenty years and feel good about that, too. Yep.
I was able to attend the opening up the bids, fellow board members, and I guess one of the things that I looked at and was stated at the meeting was the 423 that was allowed for that, and we are below that. I think Dave is going to share with us tonight other things in that nearly $90,000 there, or almost $100,000, probably is something that we're going to have to look at to use in other areas. So, to me, I think that, in listening to Dave talk, I was very, very happy with, you know, you know, listen, you know, we have a contract with these people, you know, they have to do what we, what's in the contract, they can't say all of a sudden, ah heck, let's cut this corner, no. They have to follow the contract to the T, and Dave spoke to that, and I was very, very happy with that, yeah, type thing. And the same way with the alternate, that 234,000
That's a good value.
Is another great bid, and, you know, that's our long-term facility money, and that extra money can go on to other renovation projects that we have out there as well. So, as a board member, I, I was very, very, you know, happy to see those numbers and the support that we are getting from Dave and his company, I think, makes us a very, very strong, solid bid.
So, Dave, when you have a twenty-year warranty, who stands at twenty years? The original installer or the product?
The, both. I mean, the, I mean, the thing about Neiman, because we did ask him that, too, and, you know, they've been in business for forty-plus years, which is a good thing. The con, the, the manufacturers behind that, too, and we know the product that they're, that they're proposing here is Carlisle, and that, that's, you know, one of the flagship, one of the two, really, in the country that's, that's, we've got all the confidence in, I mean, they've been around forever, so to speak, you know what I mean by that, long time, and good qualities backing of that, the warranties. The manufacturer has to certify the installation also, to provide the warranty. And what's nice is that this company is proud to say that they are in the top five percent in many of the categories of Carlisle programs, and very well-respected in the industry with the installation, so it's good to hear that. It wasn't necessarily a requirement that they exceed in all categories, but they're proud to say they do. Okay? So, I'm just going to keep going here. Now, we're going to give you a glimpse into some of the things we've been working on and, and working with the different teams on. So, you know, there's these phases we talk about. The, the bids received on the roof right now, we've basically, the schematic, the design development, the construction document, a bidding, I mean, we've gone through all the phases, and now we're going to be stepping into construction phase on the, on the roof. But so far, you know, for the rest of the bond projects, we've really dealt with schematic design and design development. One of them, we're starting to get into construction documents on, but we're just tracking right along. So, what we're going to do is kind of give you a glimpse of some of the things, you know, that we're, that we're working on here. This is essentially kind of a roadmap to, to a successful project, and that's, you know, when we're, when we're working with a project, we like to have a, kind of an internal, a design committee, an internal team, you know, it's made up of administration and, you know, business and, you know, where the dollars are and that type of thing. So, we want to make sure that we're, that that's our sounding board, because someone's got to look at the whole thing. Plus, we need some detail looks, so we start to engage what we call focus groups, and those are at each of the sites. So, we've had the ability now, I think, to touch base with every site, including the La Center administration secure entry renovation, we just kicked that off last week. And basically, we've started with the focus groups, and one of the main things on this timeline of kind of success is that we took some tours, so a lot of people from the district, it was really fun, you know, I think we went to ten different places, and we've had our meetings now, we've followed up on that, we've gotten into, you start to get into design development, where you start to see advanced planning, we're starting to do that, where we narrow the focus, because there's a strategy behind this. We like to, you know, if we're going to be meeting for the high school project, I'm just going to say it, we're not good, we're not just going to meet with the shop guy, okay? We're going to meet with the teachers and the science teachers and the shop guys, okay? Because what we want is everyone working together, talking about the best approach to everything. Then we get into the detail, that's the advanced planning meetings, then we will meet with the science teachers, just, so to speak, just the classroom teachers, because once we get the whole picture established, we dig into more details. Not everybody cares about the science, you know, where the gas or the water faucet is and that kind of detail, so. So, there's a, there's a method to all this, but we're at the point of all these projects now where we're, we're, we're going to be initiating some state and local kind of engagements, some preliminary meetings, some courtesy meetings with local building code officials and agencies, fire departments, you know, looking at where we're expanding the buildings, making sure we can still get that, so we're kind of, you know, from the design side over to the code side, we kind of keep working this back and forth, we've been finalizing and looking at budget, cost impacts constantly on this. You'll find out more on that later. So, this is, some of the tours that a lot of the groups went on, these are all the schools that we went to, and this was kind of the synthesis of the thoughts back on different projects, I mean, we crossed the country. We didn't stay in the state, though, technically, right? We didn't actually depart from the state, I don't think. We did one day, when we met Marshall, we kept on going to Brookings that same day, but that was our problem. We did one day. When we met Marshall, we kept on going to Brookings that same day, but that was our problem, not yours. That was an early one, wasn't it? But basically, you know, what we wanted to do is kick a lot of tires and just, you know, hey, how often you get to do this, right? How often you get to build an auditorium in your community? Let's go look at a bunch of them. You know, let's, let's find out what works, what doesn't work. So we really, I think we had a good time and really learned a lot as a, as a group. You know, we talked together, we debriefed. We did the same thing for classrooms and egg labs and science labs, fab labs. I mean, you name it, we were out there talking to people about it. So seeing what's happening and how they're implementing programming, how are they collaborating with other organizations and getting sponsorship? I mean, wow, it's exciting. A lot of stuff going on out there. So we did a lot of that. So I thought, well, okay, let's just show with you where we're at. This was the review and comment. This was, you know, basically what, what we started with. Okay, this was back in September last year. We were working with these plans. So this is La Center. You know, yeah, we've been looking at the HVAC area. We've, we've done the roof now. Now we're, now we're targeting the administration, the controlled entry. We don't have any plan to share with you, because like I say, we just kicked that off last week, so that's starting. But thankfully, you know, we are on track here. Here's the issuing the bid. These were the dates that we suggested, May tenth. We actually hit it. Yeah. Doesn't always happen that way, especially when you double the amount of scope and triple the complexity. Yeah. Thanks, Carol. Well, anyway, it's all good. So here we are. We're on a journey. So we're starting our schematic phase here, and then we'll be into design development and some construction documents. So our plan is to issue that for bidding in November of this year and basically do the construction next summer. Okay? So here's what Lonsdale looked like, you know, for the review and comment. Remember eight classroom addition? Pretty straightforward. Great idea, at least in a closed room with limited input. So then what happens when you open it up to the focus groups, you learn about, you know, there's some things here. You know, we really do like this yard over here to play in and that kind of stuff. And by the way, you know, the moisture, the water, and it kind of slopes down towards it. And not that we shouldn't have known all that stuff, but you can only know so much, you know? Besides, you know, the connection with the butterfly garden is like really a neat thing. So long and short of it is, A, on money kind of comes into this. If we don't have to do two additions to a building, we have less impact on the existing facility. Okay, we're doing less disruption to things that are currently working. So wow, okay, well, let's think about this. So basically, there's your eight classrooms, and that's, that's where it's going. And, and it really makes a lot of sense from all sorts of standpoints. And it gives an extension of this, this team area. It creates its own team area. We're able to reuse this, this window wall out here. We're able to have the kindergarten rooms. We're able to consolidate plumbing, all that stuff. So it's a more economical, efficient solution. And so we're very excited about this. So this is the idea right now that's, that's being developed and working towards the, we're a little bit deeper into this project. We're through design development now. We're truly in working drawings, the construction document phase. We're looking to issue this in July and bid it late July. So, you know, the whole idea is to get this under construction this fall, and we need to do that. It's about eleven thousand square feet, and it's, it's a pretty good schedule for a contractor at that point. So, you know, we really want a lot of interest on this. It's a good clean addition project. I think it'll be a good test to the following addition pricing that we're going to get. So this will open up, you know, in the summer without any real fanfare as far as, you know, oh, kids are coming back. We really want to be able to get this one in the middle of summer opening, so that you can move into it and have that ready for use for the school year nineteen twenty. Isn't that something? School year nineteen twenty. Twenty, twenty twenty. Anyway. Didn't know if I'd say that, that, I mean, anyway. I'm not getting any younger, am I? Okay, so this is Montgomery, and we've had a lot of discussion on that, too. Remember, here's the review and comment. We were targeting this area right here to reconstruct that area, do an addition, kind of a new link there, new entry. This is actually the plan now. This is the current iteration of this plan. We've had a lot of discussion about that. There's four teaching stations in there plus an office addition. And we've got a little bit of extension into some of this adjacent available space that's underutilized right now, next to the district shop area, that we're going to be utilizing for kind of a sibling room and a conference room to really, instead of building a bigger addition, we're able to utilize some of that space that exists in there a little more economical. We are pushing the budget on this. I mean, this is a pretty nice, nice deal, but again, the task has been, we looked at some, you know, all in, way over the budgets. We've really throttled this back to a, you know, we're not tearing out all the walls. We're trying to keep a bearing wall, working around it, you know, because it holds the roof up. A lot of diligence has been done on this, and we've got a good team on it, and I think everyone's really headed in the right direction on this. So we ran into some, you know, heavy code elements as far as some exiting out of a three-story element here that we really needed to maintain, some exiting. So, you know, we know a lot more about this. We've got a lot more confidence in this project, and I think it's a good solution. I think we're going to build the playground one day to the south, right?
That was the last-
I think that's where we're ending up with it.
Yep.
And when I say one day, it's because we don't have the money right now, but at least we got a spot for it and an access point to it. Okay, it's kind of a master plan. So, you know, parking for this area would be up in this parking lot here, so we'd want to make sure that we've got our egress path to this new established secure entry at that point. Again, this one is almost done with design development. I think we're very close to that, and we're going into the construction documents. Because the goal is to issue this late July, August timeframe and be bidding that. The construction isn't, you know, bidding it here, you know, why here? Well, we were talking about maybe bidding it in the same timeframe as the high school. It's a big picture thing. Maybe we could combine the bids. Maybe, you know, there'd be more interest in this project if it was in conjunction with the high school expansion. So I don't want to cast anything in stone tonight, but I mean, that's kind of where we are with it. Otherwise, you know, I think that there's a lot of prudence to that. I've been rethinking that a little bit recently with some of the LTFM allocations for this piece of the project, but anyway, that's a detail. Long and short of it is, we may start the construction a little bit early before school lets out for that addition. But again, it's five hundred square feet. I think we could actually do this whole project over the summer and try to impact the school year to the minimum for Montgomery. Okay? This is what the review and comment looked like for the, for the auditorium and the classroom and, you know, the egg addition. Everyone remembers that. And this is what the current plan looks like as of this morning. And you can see here, you know, we've got the auditorium in the same spot. We've got the classrooms in the same spot. Some pretty exciting things have transpired, though. We're really connecting the egg tech with the existing egg lab, which is awesome. We saw some really good examples of that on our tours and how that really works, where you can combine those programs a little bit closer. We used to have, you know, kind of a walkway in between and stuff, and now we've moved that towards it. We've also looked at the idea of, you know, the project lead the way is kind of in the spot right here, totally detached from a lot of this. And the idea, as the, as the enrollment grows here, you know, these two classroom areas could be creatively, well, creatively created, I guess, to accommodate this type of programming, but also after the flexibility of two individual learning stations down the road. So basically, this is an amazing thing that we saw repeatedly as a success point of programming. You know, having that, that technology, that technology part adjacent with the hands-on learning and getting the right type of equipment shared between those programs. And I think the focus groups, for one, are really excited about where this is landing. The science lab is, is located at this point right here. And basically, again, kind of not, not so much tied, you know, historically, you know, departmentally, but tying it more with classrooms and having some more flexibility and some more adjacency with the classroom learning. You know, whether those are math programs or other types of programs. You know, we're building these buildings today that we don't know really how you're going to be using them in twenty, thirty years, forty years, fifty years. But what's exciting is, is that people are considering that. And it isn't just about, you know, turning elementary classrooms into high school classrooms, which worked, you know? But now we've got, we've got an opportunity here. So basically, you know, all the things that we talked about, bridging this, connecting this circulation pattern here. One thing that we're not doing is we're not going to destroy this perfectly good classroom that's functioning now. That's what the review and comment had advised. And putting lockers in there. We're rethinking the additional locker locations required. We're maintaining that classroom, so that's step one of saving money, was we're not building another classroom, okay? So we're building the classrooms that we need. We're not trying to disrupt things. And we've got a better, in a way, a better connection as a result, and a clearer connection. In fact, we've got a nice connection here with the special ed classroom that is adjacent to the program. And there's all, there's a door there for Pete's sake. So let's capitalize on all these things that we're able to really dig into when we're thinking about things holistically with the focus group teams. So it's just really exciting results based on all that effort that's, that's placed. The auditorium, like we mentioned, it's at seven hundred seats. Yes, it has a stage, a scene shop. Yes, it's adjacent to it. We've got that makeup combination locker room characteristic that we've been looking at. We've been looking at access points in the detail. Very pleased to, to, to share that that's really working out good, and it's coming together. So we're trying to maximize all that space also.
Dave-
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you could go back. I know that Kevin and Dan, with that environmental learning-
Oh, yeah.
-area, winter was a concern, snow removal, so on and so forth. Is, is that still part of the design to get out to it?
We've got kind of a neat thing going where, another reason why science didn't really want to be here is because what we really want to do is use the big overhead door that we're putting here for the egg tech lab. And then have overhead doors also to allow maintenance equipment in and out of there with minimal disruption. I mean, it's across this one piece of hallway is all it is. So we're not trying to be nuts and say, hey, let's take out, you know, doors that are used for safe exiting for students and, and community people and try to make that our way. Let's just create a way for the maintenance equipment. So I think we've really capitalized on that, too, and landed on the best possible scenario, whether it's summertime or wintertime.
Even some discussion on, in particularly for the summer, rather than thinking of bringing a lawn mower through and in, Barry shared, we, and I think Mr. Fitter also, the two of them were talking, said, why don't we just have a shed and have a riding lawn mower just located in there-
It's always your option, yeah.
Rather than thinking you've always got to come in and out every week and stuff. So just some means, other means to be able to access the area.
And we're thinking about the future as that evolves and develops and starts to grow. Because, I mean, let's face it, I mean, it's minimal money right now. It's basically drainage. You know, that's what we're accommodating as far as the referendum. But look at that palette for the future. I mean, there's been all sorts of discussion about, about growing areas and planting beds and maybe, maybe some growing structures, greenhouse things. Who knows? It's a nice outdoor learning area. Could be a little amphitheater. I mean, you know, you're going to need access to do any of that. So we're pre-planning the access points for larger equipments. You're not hoisting everything in on cranes, you know, whether it's mulch or whatever. Good idea. Thank you. Boy, you don't get that every day. So, so with all this, you know, some of the pragmatic stuff, you know, you're going to see some, some drilling equipment out there, and they're going to be, you know, why are they drilling holes in the ground? Well, we need to test the soil so we can design the proper foundations, and so these start to become. Now that we've got this plan stabilized, we're able to tell the testing agencies where they're, they actually have to drill those to be able to get what our structural engineers need to be able to design the proper foundations. So some of that's going to be going on, whether it's the future parking area to the north or the building areas to the south. So don't be excited when you see that happening. Be positive. It's a good thing.
Can I ask a quick question on the auditorium?
Sure.
Is the main entrance going to be in from the school or from the outside of the building?
Main entry is up here. That's, I think that that's-
So that's right out here at the-
It really is, yep. I mean, that's where a lot of the parking is, and of course, we want to expand that parking. It's not shown on this particular drawing, but the expansion of the parking. This could always serve as the entries as well, though, because the building does zone nicely. You know, this is a certain functionality. It's pretty exciting, because, you know, this, this center of activity, yeah, it, it serves itself well by itself, and it zones nicely for the actors and using the rehearsal rooms here that we're in right now as kind of green rooms behind the zone. But it also allows this, this commons cafeteria area to be an extension of the auditorium. And I'll tell you, there, I don't know if there's been a high school that we've designed recently that hasn't had that component, so it's nice that that exists here already, and that dual access point. So you can really use it for large groups, multiple groups, and the like. So it's pretty exciting.
Okay, thank you.
Schedule on that, you know, we are, this is an aggressive schedule, I'll just say it. You know, I mean, it's a quick schedule. And, you know, sliding this a little bit, I don't want to, because we really want to get this under construction, because it is a long construction period for thirty thousand square feet, thirty thousand plus square feet. We want to get them going well into this winter here. And, you know, we're already kind of pre-planning the classroom academics portion to open up for the school year nineteen twenty, but to understand that the completion for the auditorium will probably be a little bit off, you know, end of October, November. It's kind of a sequenced opening for that, just because those spaces take time. And, you know, that we want to kind of pre-plan that in, so we don't see ourselves paying a premium to be able to accomplish something. And we've talked to the groups about that, and that makes sense, you know, for the big events and activities that are going to be held in that facility. So we're rolling along in the schedule, developing nicely. So project budget and schedule, it sounds kind of scary. This, I mean, this is, this is how we look at the whole thing. We look at it, you know, in context with everything that's going on. So, you know, we've accomplished that task. Success, okay? So we've got a lot more of these successes that we need to achieve to be able to maintain our schedule here. You know, passed the referendum in February. You know, that's, that's awesome. And there's a lot of work that's going to be done now. And so we've been working with Gene, the business, and looking at funding and kind of the allocations of, so that they're able to structure, you know, hopefully, some investments and things to maximize your, your dollars. And, and we're just going to keep hitting these deadlines is what our goal is. What's that? Well, that's a squiggly line that just showed up on there. Did you see that? Should I do it again? Okay.
We've had too many meetings today, Dave.
I was going to say, what kind of day starts? It's a long day for you, isn't it?
I feel like that squiggly line's going in the wrong direction.
I know it is.
A downward squiggly line.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, what that is, is a cost index that we use, that we look at every month. And, and that has happened since we submitted for the review and comment. And, you know, we plan in four percent. You know, the, the average over the last thirty-five years in Minnesota's been basically three point seven, three point eight percent annual inflation index, using this indexing. So we plan four percent typically. That's what we planned with you guys. That's what we planned with every other district. In Oka, you name it. You know, they passed a big referendum, too. But basically, the, what's happened since this point has been pretty interesting. So I just want to show you over the last fifteen years. That's what the last seven months have looked like here. And you can see a trend line. And we are, the trend line is so far in the rearview mirror that you can't even appreciate it.
Do you have any, I guess it would just be a guess. I was going to say guesses, but it would be a guess. Do you have any guesses? Why? I mean, this is so out of the ordinary, is it not?
It is. We started noticing a lot of trucks on the road last year, like congestion in the metro area. There's a lot of activity going on. The state of Minnesota in November did pass one point three five billion dollars in school funding, referendums. Billion. You know, Nokanipin passed the largest in the state of Minnesota, and that was a quarter of a billion just in that one district. So that stuff is happening. was a quarter of a billion just in that one district. So, that stuff is happening, and it's happening. Last thing we want is to not anticipate this. So, the good news is, bad news is that it's happening. I mean, it's kind of weird. We track three regional, big regions in the country. We track Minneapolis, we track Chicago, and we track Philadelphia, because those are kind of our three main regional national markets. And Minnesota's the only one that's doing this right now, which is a bummer, because we've got most of our work right now in Minnesota, you know? But Chicago's kind of in the 3.5, 4% range, and Philadelphia's the same. And it's, I don't know if it's just because we're further up the pipeline, or if we've initiated so much stuff that the contractors, you know, it's hitting. And I'd say, well, hey, that's just an index. It's not real, but unfortunately, we've opened up a couple of bids with Inoka Annapin that have come in that have matched that index on two new elementary schools. I mean, these are big projects. They're 28, not that these aren't big projects, but I mean, they're $30 million each, you know, two of them, in the last two months. And we're going to open up some more bids next week, and we'll report how that's tracking. Those are big additions as opposed to new buildings. So, maybe there's a dynamic there. Maybe it's, you know, but anyway, last thing we want to do is just say, well, let's forget about that. It's not going to happen to us. So, what we did in our first meeting, in the internal team, the executive team, business superintendent, people that were involved, I laid it out there and said, you know, I think we've got a plan on this happening. So, that's what my job is, right? Mr. Bummer sometimes. But I'm not the optimistic guy in the room half the time, so, I mean, when it comes to bids. So, anyway, so we're going in with our eyes open. So, we are, we're in a concerted effort to try to maximize every decision on a dollar-cost-benefit ratio, getting the quality, but yet watching the dollars. And we're going to see a lot of alternates on your bids, on your projects, to be able to, you know, maybe consider different material selections in the flooring or the walls or things like that, just to help maximize our ability to get these projects delivered for you. Okay? So, anyway, that's what's happening locally. Any questions on that?
Better to be aware and plan for it.
Exactly. Exactly. So, I mean, you know, just that decision alone at the high school, it's a great example. Hey, why should we destroy a perfectly functioning classroom and turn it into something that the principal had an idea on differently anyway? So, let's bring it, all the ideas together. That saved a half a million dollars. Now, unfortunately, the inflation had already eaten that up and then some, but that's a great thing, that we can make those kinds of decisions that don't affect anything. Okay? But it saved a half million dollars. It did that. So, I know that. So, anyway, that's, those are the kind of quality decisions that the teams are engaged in right now, and they should all be applauded in their efforts. So, okay? It's not an easy task, you know? This is a big deal, and we're all on board with it. So, next steps is really, you know, we need the authorization to issue contracts. We'd like to get contracts to the contractor to keep that roof project going. And we're just going to continue rolling with all your groups, if it's okay with you. And I think it's working pretty good right now.
This is probably a random question, but have you correlated with the opening of the bids of the projects with the timing of our school board meetings, so that we could award in a timely fashion?
We do that.
Okay.
Yep. Yep.
It was hard to read.
I know.
Okay.
We do that, yes.
Perfect.
Yep. We like to do that.
Any other questions we're going to have?
Well, I have a question. It may not be the best time to ask it, but I'm going to, because that's what I do best, is with the roof. I know that there was talk about with the, when the roof would be done in conjunction with the secured entrance. So, is, when they did that bid, did they decide, or was it something that they looked at, that they could do it now? And then, when it's time to do the construction on the secured entrance, it won't impact that? Or does that have to wait?
Right. We did look at that. And basically, you know, we worked with our mechanical engineers and talked about that, especially on the base bed roof, and then also those other classrooms that are going to be ventilated, right, as part of this work. And Carl, you know as much about this as I do.
So, what had been happening is after the structural and mechanical analysis met over this last year, it was decided that there's going to be no issue doing the roof now. And what we're going to do is actually put a rooftop unit above that space.
Okay.
It's going to be renovated. It's going to be on students. And that can be loaded right on the existing roof, and it wants to prepare to done. Nice part about that is you don't have penetrations and potential future points of failure. So, the guys really thought through it well. They did a deep dive of plans, the existing plans. They mapped out a good path for you.
Nice. Okay. Thank you.
And that information of that puller, that grate, was a part of the bid itself. So, in the pre-bid meetings, we did talk about that with the contractors, so they knew that that would have to be a part of it. So, there was no surprise to them after they were already costing things out.
Okay. Thanks. Good deal.
I just want to commend our staff. I mean, these have been deep discussions, and they have been thoughtful. And our staff is, and I don't say this as a surprise, I say it as an affirmation, they are really knowledgeable about, like, for example, auditorium aspects. We have some people who really get where the auditorium strengths can be and its functionality. And that's the message they kept saying, we need this to be functional for a multi-use facility. And they've held true to that. And it's been very easy for the theater people and the music people to be at odds, because if you're really good for a theater, you're not going to be so hot for music, vice versa. And yet, they have been so collegial and collaborative on it, and what could be the win-win. And so, that's been really exciting to see. The other part is the innovations that they're starting. You know, the tours were huge, really opened eyes to, you know, what flexibility can give us. Rather, in these classrooms, they aren't going to look like what we have. And we said that, because this is probably, you know, this is going to be a long time before there's any new, this needs to be future-focused. And so, just as a shop, you know, you need that for your skilled trades. Having our classrooms where you can have flexibility of larger groups, smaller groups, you know, the collaboration, the marketing work, the things that are kind of like a shop, so to speak, for our other courses that are providing opportunities for our students to have real-world experiences, like in, you know, what does it look like out in corporate world? It's not a 900-square-foot room, you know? It's got to be able to move around. And so, as we're getting into some of those detail works, it's a lot more movable walls, rideable walls, things that you could open up and have, you know, 90 kids in, 60 kids, co-teaching models that are collaborative, interdisciplinary, all the things that you've been hearing about in our previous, like, curriculum reviews, moving to that personalization and flexibility, that's what our secondary folks have really been focused on. And it's been a total mind shift for some. And they've become innovative to the point of, I'm going, ooh. But hey, it's exciting. And that's what this needs to be, because doing more of what we have, what we have is great. Let's stretch this one out a little further. Let's give our kids some experiences, even some students on our tours. The first one, the student said, oh, I don't know if I could handle this kind of freedom. And by the time we were in a few more settings, he's like, you know, I could really see myself learning a lot more here and being, so again, it just changed all what they got experience to. So, it's been a really exciting process. Any other questions for Dave? All right. Thank you.
But David's diner's closed, though, so I can't go grab a burger there.
I know. We even got him to try vamachka soup.
Really good.
Have you had a kolachki yet, too?
A what?
A kolachki?
Ted, who came with him, went and got kolachkis one day.
Yeah.
Okay.
From Frankies, yep?
Yeah. Ted is Czech.
Yeah?
For sure. Exactly. Well, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Might as well stay put. We'll go right into roofed it.
Oh, good. Yeah, okay.
All right. Yeah. Well, contract for the Lee Center Elementary Middle School Re-roofing Project.
I'll make a motion. Are we to that point?
We've had all the dialogue we've had around.
I'm also very good at that, too.
Do you second Ash?
I do. Yes, I do.
Do we want discussion?
Like we had it.
I have a motion by Krista Gettle, second by Asha Receval, to award the contract for the Lee Center Elementary Middle School Re-roofing Project to Neiman Roofing Company Incorporated of New Craig, Montgomery, Minnesota. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed 6-0. All right. There you go.
We are down to school board authorization for change orders.
Yep.
Do you all want Dave to stay longer?
No.
No. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Subway's still open, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Subway's open.
Thank you for coming after your meeting.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Drive careful. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you.
Drive safe.
Bye-bye.
All right. Next up, the grant for the Tri-City United Superintendent to authorize to approve the building project change orders up to $50,000.
This was something we've talked about before, as we well know now that we get to the point of actual construction. We know, well, we would hope not, but we have to be anticipating that there may be change orders. And sometimes those change orders can be for a decrease in the cost, but more than likely, they'll be for increase. And in order to be able to keep us moving along on timelines, it is typical for a school board to authorize the superintendent to be able to approve change orders up to a threshold. In the typical is anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000. And in looking back in the past construction, previously for Tri-City United or the previous bond referendum, that threshold was $50,000 for the superintendent to be able to make those determinations. And so, it would be my recommendation and request that the board authorize me to be able to make those, that decision without needing to come back and have a special board meeting for every change order.
And this was part of your question that you sent out, and we responded with the agreement. So, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Kevin Huber, second by Michelle Borcher, to grant the Tri-City United Superintendent the authorization to approve the building project change orders up to $50,000 without bringing it to the school board for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed 6-0. Next, the approval of the 2019 high school music trip to Orlando.
Yes, this is a follow-up to the presentation made at our previous meeting of a request for, by Mr. Frankhouse and Mr. Root, to take our instrumental and choral departments to Orlando in Florida in 2019. They kind of shared the overall. They researched a company, which is a different company than was before, which was a good thing, and also have some plans laid out for fundraising and those types of things. And the trip would take place in March, like a Wednesday to a Sunday, I believe it was.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Motion by Krista Gettle, second by Michelle Borcher, to approve the 2019 high school music trip to Orlando, Florida. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed 6-0. Next, the acceptance of our Southern Regional Implementation Project for PBIS.
This was a mini-grant that Ms. Allison Bass and Mr. Jeff Eppen applied for and did receive in the amount of $1,636 to be used for our Titan Pride PBIS program here at Tri-City United High School. And would request that we accept this grant with great gratitude for the willingness for people to write it, but also for the grantors to consider our request.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Motion by Michelle Borcher, second by Krista Gettle, to accept the Southern Regional Implementation Project, the PBIS mini-grant, in the amount of $1,636. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed 6-0. Next, we have the Community Education Rate of Pay Update.
So, very minimal change and shift. Mr. Preising, as he's reviewed the last summer and is looking forward to this summer, really was looking to be able to expand some of the compensation rates, in particular, in the summer rec staffing, and the differential being what the amounts paid for student staff versus site supervisors, whereas before, those were pretty much and close to the same. So, he did want to have some levels. And that's really the only shift that we see. This does meet federal minimum wage requirements as well.
I'll seek a motion.
I'll second it. Motion by Kevin Huber, second by Asha Receval, to approve the Community Education Rate of Pay Update. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed 6-0. I'll seek a motion to close the meeting to discuss negotiations.
Second.
Who is that? Me. Michelle. Motion by Dale Bass, second by Michelle Borcher, to close the meeting to discuss negotiations at 8:27 PM. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed 6-0.